All right, we are going to go ahead and get started. It is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. Aislinn, will you call roll?
Here, and I viewed the applicant's site.
Here, and I made a site visit for Agenda Item Number Three.
Here, and I made a site visit for Agenda Item Number Three.
Here, and I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three.
Here, and I also made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three.
Here, and I have nothing else to disclose.
So, the following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he, she shall first seek permission from the Chair. Oral testimony will be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. There will be different sign-in rules when we get to Agenda Item Number Four. Now, we would like to go to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the approval of minutes. Commission, do you have any questions on the minutes?
No.
With no questions, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the February 22nd, 2023 Planning and Zoning Meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Hewitt and a second by Phillips. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Fenwick? Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Before we move on to Agenda Item Number Three, I'm going to ask that nobody else sign in for Agenda Items Four and Five until we get to those Agenda Items because it's very important we stay in order on those. Okay. Yep, and we'll just leave it on the Chair, and when it's your turn, you can sit in the Chair and sign in. It makes it easier for Aislinn as well. Agenda Item Number Three is a public hearing for a preliminary plat. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Kurt and Amber Davis Living Trust, represented by RMES, to subdivide 1.29 acres, more or less, into fifteen lots. The property is located east of Philbin Road and south of Quinn Road. So, I declare... So, during this time, the applicant has ten minutes, three minutes public testimony. Those presenting or testifying shall state their name. While giving testimony, questions, and comments that should be pertinent to the application and should be addressed only to the commission, during the public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go longer than eight o'clock, the commission may take a scheduled ten-minute break. Commission members must make their decisions regarding the application, only and facts already recorded and information presented during the public hearing. Protocol requires that the commission members and audience be recognized by the Chair prior to speaking. At this time, I declare the public hearing open, and I would like to invite the applicant to come forward to the podium.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Brady Smith with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. Here tonight, representing the applicant on this project. As stated by the Chair, we're proposing fifteen lot subdivision on 1.29 acres. It's a little confusing, probably because you see nineteen units. We have a couple of lots where there's double units on there, so that's where the difference comes. So, there is, just to be clear with the folks that are here to speak, there is a proposal for nineteen units, even though there's fifteen lots, so I wanted to kind of point that out. We've had a couple of iterations of this project. You'll see some stuff in your packets regarding a lot of notes on previous versions and things, and so this has been to site plan a couple of different times and tabled a couple of times in the process, and we finally landed on something that would work. Part of the process, as we were developing this concept into what you see tonight, is there was some changes to the ordinance on infill development that allowed for a little bit more density, and so we were willing to wait for some of those changes to be, you know, in place so that we could kind of apply those rules. So, I'm sure you guys are aware of that as you've been working through some of those changes in your internal sessions and things. So, just to give you a little background, we were initially hoping to get some units off of Quinn Road. That has since changed, and everything's internal, so there's no cross-access or site limitations and things like that, so we were trying to be fair there. We've met with the fire department. We do recognize somewhat similar to kind of like the Pheasant Ridge townhouses, there's fences that would protrude off the buildings, but they can't be fenced in the back to obstruct any kind of fire prevention from the street. So, this is a private development once it leaves the city street, and we have read through the recommendations of the staff and the memorandum provided by the engineering department, and we're in agreement with those conditions and look forward to trying to get those implemented as suggested. And, you know, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. I know I'll probably be back up here as I take some notes, but if there's any questions I can answer right now, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Brady. Commission, any questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to invite staff forward.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello Senior Planner, for the record. As previously stated, we have tonight for consideration the Keystone Townhouse's preliminary plat application. The applicant on this request is Kurt and Amber Davis Living Trust. The surveyor and engineer listed on the application is Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. All noted senior requirements for this application have been met at the time of the completion of the report, and as of this meeting, staff has not received written public comment on this item. So, just for some general background, you can see just kind of a thin blue line around here. This is the site that we were talking about, south of Quinn Road. We're looking east of Philbin and north along the extension of Breezy Point Drive. The proposal calls for the plating of 1.29 acres, more or less, into fifteen residential lots. As the applicant indicated, some of those lots allow for the development of duplexes, which I will get into further. So, just for some general background, so the property is zoned residential medium-density single-family, which permits single-family homes, townhomes, and duplexes. The applicant is desirous of utilizing our infill development criteria. The infill development criteria, in order to be eligible, you need to meet all of these criteria here, A, B, C, D, and E, bound on two or more sides by existing developments, utilities available, so that trunk extension is not required, has an elevation of less than 4,600 feet, is not platted within the last 25 years, and is no larger than three acres. Upon review, the applicant is eligible to utilize the infill standards. So, the land area within the subdivision, as previously mentioned, is residential medium-density single-family. The minimum lot size for a townhome in the RMS zoning district is 4,000 square feet and 8,000 square feet for a duplex. The distinction being that for a townhome lot, you have one unit on that lot; with a duplex, you'll have two units on that lot. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into fifteen lots. Lots one through eleven are intended to be utilized for the townhomes, with the smallest lot being 2,405 square feet. Lots twelve through fifteen are intended to be utilized as duplex dwellings, with the smallest of these lots being 4,814 square feet. Whereas 60% of the 4,000 required is 2,400 square feet, and 60% of the 8,000 required is 4,800 square feet, all of the lots within the proposed subdivision do meet the minimum lot size with the infill development adjustment. So, it looks like I'm missing the plat.
We have it.
Application here for you, but that is in your packet for you. Staff does find that the proposal meets all development criteria, provided that the conditions within the staff report are met. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Commission, any questions for staff? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Before starting the public testimony, I would like to remind each person that when you come to the podium, you need to state your name. Remember to only address the commission, not the audience or the applicant. You will have three minutes to testify, and you will be asked to stop when time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application, and do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. So, at this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward. Anybody uncommitted to the application? Anyone opposed to the application? Brady, do you want to rebuttal that? Kind of tough. With no further testimony or rebuttal, I would declare the public hearing closed. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion. Is that what... May I, Chair? I move to approve the preliminary plat application from Kurt and Amber Davis Living Trust for the Keystone Townhouse's subdivision, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 16.20.050 of the Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and authorize the Chair to sign the findings of fact.
I second.
We have a motion by Hewitt and a second by Fenwick. Aislinn, will you call vote?
Hewitt?
Yes.
Fenwick? Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Chanda? Yes.
Bryan? Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Four. We do have a sign-in sheet, and I know some of you have already signed that sheet, so what I would like you to do, hopefully you know your order, so whoever is speaking, come up, state your name, and then the person who's speaking next, please sit in the chair. Once somebody's speaking and there's nobody in the chair, then you can go and sign to speak next. Just a reminder, when you come to the podium, state your name and make sure that you are addressing only the commission and audience. Please let's... No comments from the audience until it's your turn. I do have one question. Are we doing this in the order of... It's just comment. We're not doing for or against, just comment.
What I asked, and I was told, was just like any other public hearing.
Against is fine.
Okay, we'll do it, just like any other public hearing. So, at this time, we're going to hear Agenda Item Number Four, Public Hearing for the Comprehensive Plan, so please know, if you're speaking about the future land use map, that's the next Agenda Item, not this one. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public and to make recommendations to City Council regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan. So, at first, I guess the staff and the applicant share the same one.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Jim Engle, City Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. The request before you is to seek the commission's recommendation to council regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040. This plan is part of the Our Value, Our Vision Initiative, which outlines Pocatello's planning process that is focused on education, equity, empowerment, and engagement. The process culminates into a vision which informs a suite of community plans, with the comprehensive plan being the overarching plan. The comprehensive plan is central to the Planning and Development Services Department's role, which is to oversee the orderly growth and development of Pocatello. The purpose of the comprehensive plan is to establish a community-wide playbook that establishes the city's priorities for the next 20 years. City leaders, elected officials, staff, developers, community organizations, and the general public should look to this plan as a guide for important policies and decisions. To get the most out of this plan, the community should use it to represent community values for future development and vision, provide a framework and common goals for all their community plans, guide policy decisions, inform changes to city regulations and standards, inform resource and budgeting decisions, and evaluate and measure progress towards achieving community-wide goals. The plan seeks to implement a vision for Pocatello and its people. It reflects the voice of residents and is the guiding document for shaping Pocatello's future. The vision presented in the plan is built off the community values as identified through significant public outreach. The entire process of the comprehensive plan began in February of 2021, where planning staff began the initial steps to inform and coordinate with city departments and advisory committees, perform research, and formulate the outreach process and survey information. This outreach took place between June and December of 2021, where city staff attempted to engage the public through various events, open houses, and online activities. This included 20 community events, eight of which were open houses dedicated specifically to engagement regarding the plan. These events included tabling at Family Fun Day, Poki Paddle, Revive at Five, Farmer's Market, Welcome Back Orange and Black, as well as tabling at the ISU Student Union Building. Included were also presentations given to Rotary Clubs and Chamber of Commerce, and an online house... Online open house for those unable to attend the in-person open house was provided. Nearly all households in the city were mailed an invitation to participate in the in-person open houses, and 250 community members chose to participate. Throughout these open houses, we had several activities that we provided to engage with the public, one of which is here, that you see it, that we call our vision boards, giving the opportunity for people to write down what they'd like Pocatello to be by the year 2040. Another one is called Favorite Places, where we allowed people to put pins on a map or put a pin online, tell us what their favorite place in Pocatello was. 270 people chose to participate in this activity, and the map that you see here is a result of that, with downtown, City Creek, ISU being the major hotspots of those favorite places, and other areas recreation-based were definitely in the top of all the favorite places in The next activity is Community Design. We gave the opportunity for people to give us an idea of what they'd like to see future development to look like and what it should be, and these are the results within the four categories that we provided. Mixed use took the cake for housing with single-family small lots. Recreation such as trails and greenway, hiking and biking, public markets, and bike lanes and street trees were the top favorites. Area amenities, this was areas that people thought may need improvement with different categories, whether it be infrastructure, commercial, residential, utility improvements, and also including areas that should not be developed, and this map is a result of that throughout the city. The highlights of this were that foothill development should be limited, rightaway improvements, especially along corridors within the downtown. Highline, Jefferson, and Poling Corridors should be focused on, and then recreation areas throughout the city should be improved. And funding priority activity, we gave people the opportunity to have a variety of different topics, and they got to choose what their things that they believe, if they were in charge of public funds and how they were to be used, how they should be distributed. And Parks and Recreation took the highest on that, that funding should be put towards, with water quality and beautification and rightaway improvements a close second, and third and fourth. Part of this outreach was the Community Values Survey. The survey was open from July 1st to October 31st of 2021. 864 individuals chose to participate in the survey, which equates roughly to 1.5% of the city's population. I will say, in past comprehensive plans, this is a significant increase in the amount of responses we got, with the 2015 and previous coming in around 150 to 200 responses. And so, we believe that although only 1.5% of the population, it was a successful survey, and we did learn a lot from the public from this outreach. Millennials made a majority of survey responses, with those considered Gen Xers close behind. And then, people with at least a college degree and above average of our city's income also were the ones that took most of the percentage of respondents. Also on here are demographics as well. The... We learned a lot from each of these questions. We left them broad and general to get the most out of the public as we could, so that we could take that and really make this a plan valuable to people. And I just... I didn't... I'm not going to go through all these, but I just wanted to show briefly a variety of what you see in here. Mostly what I'll touch base are these little word clouds. What do you love about Pocatello? We saw a lot of small-town, outdoor, recreation, access, community. What are some of the biggest challenges? Housing, a lack, which I thought was interesting, growth, and development. What would you be most excited to show an out-of-town visitor? Again, recreation was high on the list for a lot of people, trails, hiking, ISU, City Creek, downtown. What do you find least appealing about Pocatello? I don't know if this... I don't understand that, but that's what came up a lot. A lot of this was just the lack of care, is what I saw, a lot of that, what that lack means, wanting more improvement in the city. What do you do for fun? Again, recreation, hiking, events, walking, biking. What do you want to improve about Pocatello? A lot of what we saw in the things that were lacking. River improvement, downtown, community events. The responses we got were all across the board, and we hope that through this vision, that we captured what most people were talking about. Our community is diverse, and we don't agree on everything, but we feel that this gives a broad swath at what people are talking about, and the survey was critical in determining Between January 22 and 23, planning staff thoroughly combed through the survey responses and open house feedback to identify common values and concepts the community shared. Once these common values were identified, staff began researching topic-specific information that would inform a vision with specific goals and strategies. The culmination of this vision, its goals and strategies, are what you see in the comprehensive plan. So, for the vision, the vision is broken up into seven elements and seen here in the statement, but I'm going to go over each element just briefly about what it means to Pocatello. Outdoor-oriented, to Pocatello, this means the beauty and intrinsic value of our place, connected trails and greenway systems, the conservation of our natural amenities, ecosystem health, economic opportunity, the Port Neff River vision, limited development on the benches, outdoor public space for all, parks and recreation, and proximity and access to trails. Economically robust means attracting a diversity of employers, actively recruit businesses, cost of living, diverse economic base, higher payment employment opportunities, increased retail and restaurant choices, regional draw or influence, a revitalized downtown, and retaining local talent. Environmentally resilient means addressing climate change, air and water quality, environmental protection for future generations, infill development, Port Neff River restoration, preserve slopes and benches, responsible and informed recreation, scenic beauty, and sustainable development practices. Connected, safe, and accessible means bikeable community, a community of resources accessible to all, improved infrastructure and utilities, mobility choices, safe and inviting, transit accessibility, and walkability. Civic collaboration, a unified vision, appropriate use of taxes, civic engagement and education, equitable and inclusive, government-citizen collaboration, proactive planning, public safety, quality services, and transparency. Authentic and affordable neighborhoods, access to community amenities, affordable housing, attractive, diversity, friendly neighbors, historic, sense of community, small-town vibe, unique neighborhood character, and walkable. And creative community, city beautification, better use of space, retain character, public investment in downtown, improve curb appeal, arts and culture in public spaces, and enhance maintenance of public spaces. The most critical component to this or any other long-range plan is that of implementation. The city is committed to implementing the goals and strategies in this plan. Pocatello seeks to foster a strong collaborative culture to advance the plan's vision. Going forward, we must work together as a community to build upon that spirit and to better integrate a holistic interdisciplinary approach to city projects, processes, and decision-making. Collaboration must extend beyond city departments and city officials. Implementation of the plan will only be successful through partnerships with the community, including nonprofits, businesses, employers, and the general public. These community partners offer perspectives, strategies, and resources that are essential to realizing the community vision for the future of Pocatello. The draft of the plan was released to the public on February 24th, 2023, to provide opportunity for review and feedback. This comment period was accompanied by two open houses held at the Marshall Public Library on March 7th and March 29th, 2023. The feedback we received during this comment period enabled us to finalize the document and adjust the plan as described in the memorandum, presented to you in the meeting's agenda. All comments submitted to the Planning Department have also been included in your agenda packet for your review. In addition to your guidance throughout this process, we could not have gotten to this point on Comprehensive Plan 2040 without the significant contributions of certain groups and individuals. This included the Comprehensive Plan focus group, which included Kate Fornerato, Derek Jansen, Heather Murray, Kaylee White, Amy West, and our commission's representative, Shen Kyu-Roo. Planning and Development Services staff, including the Director Brent McLean, and Carl Anderson, Will Claver, Matthew Lewis, Aislinn McCullough, and those who are no longer with our department, including Greg Cleary and our intern Ray Mondo Trevino. Additional city staff that contributed significant work to the plan includes Ryan Howerton, the city's GIS coordinator, and his intern Kylie Kowalski. And finally, I'd like to thank all the community members who have participated in the planning process and have provided direction and vision that laid the foundation for this plan. Without their input, this would not have been the plan that it is. And so, with that, any questions from the commission, I'd be happy to entertain.
Jim, I think you deserve thanks also. I know you've put a lot of hard work into this, spent several commission meetings with us going over this in detail. This, tonight, was a very brief overview for us. We spent hours going over section by section and being able to ask our questions then, and we really appreciate that, and we look forward to what comes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, this is going to be confusing where we have sign-ins.
They know they're on.
Yeah, but what if they're against it instead of in favor?
We're in favor.
Okay, so, that will make it easier. So, at this time, before starting the public testimony, I would like to remind each person, when you come to the podium, you must state your name. Please remember to only address the commission, not the audience or applicant. You have... Yeah, I... You have, yeah, I get it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. We have three minutes to testify and will be asked to stop when time runs out. Please keep your questions and comments pertinent to the application and do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application.
Hi, I'm Sue Skinner, and I live in Pocatello, Idaho. I'm the Environmental Policy Advisor to the Port Neff Resource Council, which is a nonprofit group here and grassroots organization. I would love to commend as well the staff on this document. I think it was well-written, well-organized, and it's very understandable and friendly, and I really appreciate the work that you all put into this. But what is missing is an integration of protection of our drinking water throughout the document in every section. PRC's First Campaign was organized around citizen concern about our drinking water and protecting the lower Port Neff Valley aquifer. It was called the Put Water First Campaign and advocated water security by protecting the aquifer from further degradation, valuing the drinking water we use now and into the future, and recognizing that without high-quality drinking water availability, economic development, and quality of life in Pocatello is diminished. Protecting the aquifer has been a Pocatello community priority for 30 years, yet we still have decisions that have been allowing degradation. We've had three wells go offline since the last plan, and they've had to blend and dilute acceptable drinking water, and this path is just not sustainable. Some of the vulnerabilities we have in our valley are the landfill, South Fifth, Johnny Creek, the new I-Trade Priority Area at Meek Creek, and certainly the railroad running through town, which I think Ohio has probably reminded us how important that is and what a risk that can be. So 100% of our drinking water in Pocatello comes from the lower Port Neff Valley aquifer. So how, what do we do about this? What we would like to see through this document is a plan to formalize a sensitive aquifer designation, which is a state designation for the lower Port Neff Valley aquifer. I would like to, to ask some friends here in the, in the audience here that those who support having our aquifer protected with, through a sensitive aquifer designation to just show their hands right now.
Actually, you need to only address the commission, please. Thank you.
Well, I wanted them to show their hands because I want you to see the demographic. It's been 30 years, and we're losing that expertise in our, in, through the ISU and locally, we're all getting older. With age comes wisdom, and I would love to see us have a 10-year goal to have a sensitive aquifer designation.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate that.
My name is Shannon Ansley, address 424 South 7th. I'm also a member of the Port Neff Resource Council, and again, I want to thank the city staff for the excellent job they've done, and especially for their outreach efforts. Those were amazing. I'm, I don't want to repeat what Sue just said, but I'll want to emphasize how important it is that we protect our only drinking water source, which is the aquifer right below where you sit right now, all under the valley. On top of the aquifer, businesses, industry, small agriculture, railroad, and any release, any spills from, go right through the sediments, the thin sediments on top of the aquifer and get into the aquifer. So it's extremely important that we make every effort that we can to protect that critical water source. I understand that the comprehensive, comprehensive plan is a very generalized document. It doesn't care, have any teeth to enforce anything. Where that would come into play is, is if, and I'm assuming that your, your body would also carry out the implementation along with the, the city staff and, and put in ordinances in place that could help protect our drinking water. So again, to reiterate what Sue just told, it has been over 30 years since, and for 30 years, different members, different bodies in this community have asked, Pocatello City have asked, Bannock County have asked, other city leaders to do something to protect our drinking water. For probably 15 years ago, the three main things were stormwater protection, which the city has taken care of. The second is business licensing for everyone in the city of Pocatello. Chubbick does it, Pocatello doesn't do a comprehensive business licensing. And the other is septic development, allowing septic development when everything should be sowed in this valley. You know what I mean? Okay. Anyway, the implementation that, that you guys are going to take care of is a very important step, and I hope that you move in the right direction to protect our drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And you're in favor, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I am also a member of Port Neff Resource Council, just to let you know. Leanna Litzinger, and I live at 1540 Sun Valley Way here in Pocatello. With the exception of an eight-year hiatus to Oregon for my husband's work, I've lived in Pocatello since 1978, I suppose. And, and what I would like to focus, you know, my, my three minutes on is the, again, the implementation of this comprehensive plan. It is an amazing document, 184 pages if you read all of the appendices. So it's, it's incredibly broad, and I understand that comprehensive plans do not have any teeth to them in terms of they're not legally binding, and that they are evolving documents, and that, I think that all of those things are good. But I think that that also reminds me of situations that I've seen in Pocatello where there has been a road, that a comprehensive plan, you think you're going to go down this road, and then when it comes to the implementation, that just, that just does not happen. Okay? So I, I just want to say it's, it's a great document. Thank you so much for, you know, the, the city of Pocatello personnel that, that developed it. Thank you for the work that you have, have done on that plan. It's amazing, you know? Port Neff Resource Council also really likes the, the climate goals one and two. But getting back to the implementation, and I'm hoping I'm not violating the document, the only document that I have is one that Mr. Anglesey referred to, showed on a slide, that talked about the implementation strategies. I think these strategies are wonderful, but again, this sort of cynical part of me looks at some of these strategies and thinking, and think, you know, how do we make these more binding? Okay? So I, I would just like to refer to, in particular, regularly track and report progress on achieving the goals and vision of the plan to the community, and provide an annual update in the implementation of the plan. I, I think that those are just really, really important. And one of the, the questions, I guess, that I would ask the city or the planning department is how are you going to share that information with the public? Is it going to be in a digital form, and you have to get into the city of Pocatello website and take a look at it? Or are you going to do something like a public, a public hearing? That, that would be what we would recommend, or what I would recommend, so that more people have access to it. It's sad to hear that so few people commented on the comprehensive plan, you know, members of Port Neff Resource Council. We're always watching.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
While the next person is coming up, I would just like to remind you guys that there's no need to duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous people that we've heard today. The next person on the list?
I'm neutral, but on the next one.
Well, okay, then, well, could I see the list actually for now, maybe?
I know where the list is. I might just sign up.
Yeah. You just told one lady again.
Not to sign.
Yeah, that's because I was afraid this was going to happen. Okay, so Sue, you were number one. This is what I'm going to do, then Shannon, and then Leanna. Okay. Is there anybody supporting that would like to speak? Will you write your name for us, please? And I'm just trying to keep track.
My name is Stephen Weg. I live at 442 South Garfield in Pocatello. Lived on the west side since 1980. I really like the plan. I think there's a lot of work on it. Couple of comments along the way, though. My son-in-law's in a wheelchair. He's very able-bodied, but to get from our house on South Garfield downtown is a minefield. The sidewalks stink, and nothing's been done about it. And so as long as we have this plan and we want to see the development, I'm a westsider, so I would really love to see the emphasis and the build-out of this plan to make the river and the west side as vibrant as it should be and could be, and the sidewalks really, truly accessible to everyone who needs to be able to walk, or roll, or use a walker, and not have to trip all over themselves. So kudos on the plan, a lot of work ahead of us, and I think the real proof in the pudding is what we actually see five years from now. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in support of the plan that would like to speak? You can just leave it on the, the, yeah, right there is fine, thank you. If nobody else, then those uncommitted to the application.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ryan Satterfield. I certainly appreciate all of the work that's gone into this plan. I've been involved in comprehensive plans in the past and know of all of the reading and studies that, that go into that, and I appreciate the city staff's effort and the outreach that they made. I tried to help as much as I could get that out as well, but I feel like the plan presents itself very nice, very graphically pleasing. I guess the reason that I, I stand up here somewhat uncommitted on it is because I don't know that I could just say if I were sitting in, in your shoes right now, that it is a plan that fits what, what we're trying to go for in Pocatello as it's currently written. Although the vast majority of it, I, I can certainly agree with and, and think that that is a representation of what Pocatello wants, especially to do with the parks and recreation focus. I really like that. I think that that part of the, the survey and, and the community outreach was, was very well represented within the plan. Two things that I guess I would just say that I feel like we need to have caution with is, and, and I don't want to be misunderstood or misinterpreted in, in this either, but the focus on climate change within the plan I found quite interesting. Given that through the survey, the number of times that climate change came up with the 864 respondents was, was six. And, and so those numbers, again, they can be interpreted a number of different ways, but to create a, a plan and the number of times that climate change is then mentioned within the plan relative to even if you search for the word economy, they're pretty similar. And I feel like the plan should focus probably more so on, and the respondents to the survey were concerned way more about the economy than, than climate change. And I'm not trying to say that climate change is not important. I think that there's a lot that can be done there and that we need to focus on. I just feel like there might be a, a bit of an imbalance with the way that that is presented, and as we see people coming in or businesses coming in looking at our plan, that I don't know that that truly represents what the people of Pocatello are trying to make Pocatello. And then the second part would just be that to do with, with hillside development. Obviously, I have a, a vestment in, in hillside development. We've been developing the hillsides of Pocatello, my family has, for years, and appreciate the ability that we've had to work with city staff through that. We just have to be cautious how we limit that development within the valley.
Thank you very much. And if the next person who would like to speak uncommitted wants to come up and sign in?
Lydia Noble, Pocatello, Idaho resident. My concern with the plan, I think it's a beautiful plan. I think it's very well put together, and I can commend the city employees who worked very hard on it. But my concern is from a business perspective, because if you have a plan of this magnitude and this size and this, with these goals, I think that the city needs to have more economic growth, more proof of economic growth. So my concern has to do with maybe this plan is a little bit too soon, too hasty. Because one of the documents that I took a photo of when I was visiting Jim Anglesey and some of the other city staff at the library when they did presentations, one of the documents was Census Bureau data. And this page, if it's accurate, is showing that while the state of Idaho is experiencing significant growth in industry, they've grown 119,000 new industries in the different categories of industries that are shown. However, Pocatello is decreasing. We've dropped from 25,000 to 23,000 in the various industries. And to me, that's indicative of a community that may not be able to pursue a plan, a comprehensive plan of the magnitude that this one is. So that is my concern. And as a taxpayer in the community, if you're not having the buy-in from industries, big hotels, you know, big manufacturing companies, to come here to help support something like this and donate money towards developing something of this magnitude, I don't see how a city can pursue something like this. I'm neither for or against. I love the plan. I think it's beautiful, but my concern has to do with the financing of this type of a thing. And I've been in business for 30 years, so I look at things from a monetary perspective, and I worry about the taxpayers of this town. I'm retired, I'm on fixed income now, as are many people here, and I am just concerned about the financial. A plan like this is no good unless it is tied to the finances. And for that aspect alone, I have huge concerns. Thank you very much.
Next person uncommitted.
Hi, my name's Kathy Olson. You all have seen me a lot lately. I live at 735 Bitterroot, and I'm here, I changed where I needed to talk. So I'm in favor of the plan. So Nat, can you hear me?
Scoot over one podium, just to be safe. Thank you.
Uh huh. So Kathy Olson, I am in favor of the plan now that I'm hearing the other. What I'm so concerned about is I am a direct recipient to the comprehensive plan of 2015. The plan does not protect the people of Pocatello. It offers all of these things that are such important things that we want, greenways, open space, open landscapes, open, I'm sorry, small family lots, foothill development should be limited, recreation. We had many of those things in the 2015 plan, and everything is going to developers. Everything is not our Pocatello values, our Pocatello things, but things that somebody from out of state comes in, uses a comprehensive plan, and no one listens. So I'm just begging you, if we have a comprehensive plan, it's only as good as you. The comprehensive plan is going to be here when we're all dead or when we're elderly. But if we don't have a city planning commission and a city council that is willing to listen to the residents of Pocatello, it's just... to the residents of Pocatello, it's just words. And so, thank you.
Anybody else uncommitted? Anyone opposed? Last chance. Okay. With that, I will ask the applicant if they would... Staff, would you like to say anything else?
I just want to reiterate the importance of implementation of a plan. We see all too much, especially in the planning world, of a plan that goes through all this effort, engagement, creation, and adoption, only to be put up on a shelf and just left there. Implementation is absolutely key to a plan like this, especially for the public, who gave us so much information. It's our duty to ensure that we do all that we can to implement the goals and strategies within this plan. And that takes everybody. Just us planners cannot do that alone. It takes all city departments. It takes a council willing to prioritize things in their budget. It takes community organizations and the general public alike to support efforts when they come, whether it's through a budget or changes in standards, to really see these goals and strategies come to fruition. And so if we want a plan that is an active plan and that gets implemented, it takes all of us for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Commission, how would you like to proceed?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 and to authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
I'd like to second.
We have a motion by Hugh and a second by... Either way. Benwick. Jason, will you call vote?
Yes.
Benwick?
Yes.
R2?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Ruh?
Yes.
All right. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Public Hearing for the Comprehensive Plan 2040: Future Land Use Map. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public and to make recommendation to city council regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2440: Future Land Use Map. At this time, I declare the public hearing open and would like to invite staff to come forward.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Jim Anglesey, Long Range Planner. The request before you is to seek the commission's recommendation regarding Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040: Future Land Use Map. The Future Land Use Map provides direction on how the land within and surrounding the city of Pocatello is to be used for future development or redevelopment. The map should reflect the vision of Pocatello Comprehensive Plan 2040 and is to be used in tandem with the city's current zoning ordinance, Title 17, which utilizes Euclidean zoning, characterized by the separation of land uses by use type. The proposed Future Land Use Map, if approved, will replace the current Future Land Use Map, as shown here on the map. You have two, a comparison of the current and proposed. Major differences in the map, in the proposed map, include land within the area of city impact, where the current map only extended beyond the municipal boundaries within the North Gate area. It also includes three new designations, as well as areas important to protect from development due to the desire to protect riparian, nature, wildlife, and/or recreational areas. So here you have the proposed designations. Open space designation denotes projected or existing private, public, or quasi-public open space areas. These areas may include federal, state, city, and/or privately-owned land, parks, cemeteries, golf courses, trails, river areas, nature and conservation areas, and/or agricultural land.
Can you, as you do that, can you state the color that corresponds with that? It's very hard. I see them squinting, trying to figure out what that is. So if you can just say, like, open space is the dark green area up here. I think that would help them.
So open space you have here, the dark green surrounding. Residential, this designation denotes, and this is in yellow, projected or existing residential areas for various densities and forms. These areas include a range of residential uses from suburban to urban neighborhoods. Mixed use, you see in the light pink. This designation denotes projected or existing areas that allow a mixture of compatible residential and commercial uses within a structure, development, or areas that serve as a transition between a residential and commercial zone. Commercial is seen in red. Light red denotes projected or existing areas that allow commercial uses with upper-story residential houses or uses. Urban core in the dark red denotes projected or existing areas of the highest density and a variety of uses, including multi-story commercial, upper-story residential, mixed-use, residential apartment, or condo buildings. Employment, which is seen in purple. This denotes projected or existing areas that allow commercial and office park uses. Industrial that you see in blue denotes projected or existing areas that allow industrial and office park uses. And then special districts, as seen in yellow, denotes projected or existing areas that by their function, disposition, or configuration cannot or should not conform to one or more of the other designations.
What would be an example of a special district in Pocatello?
Airport and the university.
Okay.
As a result of the public engagement efforts regarding Comprehensive Plan 2040 between June and December 2021, the resulting goals and strategies of the proposed plan and as a requirement by state code regarding comprehensive plans, a draft of the Future Land Use Map was created. Once the draft was created, all property owners whose property designation was proposed to change were sent a letter outlining the proposed changes. City of Pocatello Code Section 1702-300A3D requires that if more than 200 property owners are to be noticed in lieu of mailed notices to each property owner, the city is only required to publish said notice in the journal as both a display and a legal notice, with additional noticing sent to television, radio, media outlets. However, as a courtesy, planning staff sent approximately 2,000 letters to provide opportunity for proposed, for property owners to respond, ask questions, or request a change in the proposed designations. These letters were sent February 28, 2023, informing each recipient that they had until March 31, 2023 to respond if changes to the proposal were desired. Dozens of calls were received regarding these letters, and staff clarified information that may not have been clear and resolved concerns regarding the proposed designations. In many instances, property owners worked with staff to discuss any needed adjustments to the proposed designation of their property. From the feedback we received from property owners, one major change from the original proposed designations was that of changing the "public" or "P" designation to the open space designation, due to concern that many had that the designation of "P" would restrict the use of private property and/or result in potentially eminent domain, even though the reality of this concern is certainly not the case, nor was it the intention of said designation to inflict any regulatory takings. It is important to keep in mind that the Future Land Use Map does not equal zoning. The Future Land Use Map is adopted to guide development and land uses, but does not include any regulatory standards. As you see here, this graph shows kind of the relationship between designations and zoning, where the designations are guiding principles and zoning are the regulatory Zoning, on the other hand, is a regulatory tool used to provide development standards regarding use on a particular parcel as identified in the zoning ordinance. It is through zoning that allows or restricts various use types. The Future Land Use designation of a particular property may not align with existing zoning, and even our current one does not align with existing zoning. Again, it's used as a guide, and the designation may provide the ability to rezone the property to allow for various development or redevelopment activities. This ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Just like previously, we appreciate all the time that you spent with us going through this and answering our questions. At that time, we appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to sound like a broken record. When you come to the podium, please state your name. Remember to only address the commission, not the audience or staff. You have three minutes to testify, and will be asked to stop when time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. We will first hear from people in favor. If you would like to go after the person speaking, please go ahead and come up and write your name so we can keep it rolling. At this time, I would like to invite anybody in favor to come forward. Please write your name. Yeah.
I think I can write my name and talk at the same time. I'm in favor of the Future Land Use Map.
Will you state your name first?
Oh, excuse me. My name is Robin Wilson. I'm a Pocatello resident.
Thank you, Robin.
And I... I'm in favor of this updated Future Land Use Map, to the extent that we needed to update what was available. I have a question about the zoning chart that was previously on display. In terms of the gentleman city planner was saying how...
Rich, will you go ahead and pause for a second?
Sure.
I don't want you to waste your time speaking, and I will tell you that I know Jim will be more than happy to answer your question after we're done with this. Just so you know, because we can't answer your question.
Okay.
So right now, I would just state your comments.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Rich.
I look forward to this map becoming available as a reference to actual zoning decisions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone uncommitted? Then go ahead and sign in first. We'll wait for you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Proxel Bailey, and I live at 8354 North Gathie. I'm in the Impact Don area. And I realize that this is just a suggestion, but they're likely to annex us. I have signed away my right to contest that because I am on city sewer, because I needed a toilet. And so I'm not really for or against it, but I did want to take this opportunity to make it public record that on one of those zoning charts, it said light commercial was going to go to commercial. I am light commercial, but on the map with the little colors, if I'm reading it right, it's mixed use, which is more appropriate. I wanted to support that mixed use designation. I have livestock, including swine and over six chickens. I also operate a commercial business of RV storage there, and I live there. I have a well, but I'm on city sewer, so there's a lot going on there. And I just wanted it to be noted that it would be important to me if this map does come out the way it looks, that I get to do all those things. Thanks.
Thank you. Uncommitted?
Uncommitted.
And if you want to put that on the chair so the next person could come up when you're done, that would be great.
Lydia Noble, Pocatello resident. I'm uncommitted to the land use, but I again have a concern that I just want to bring up to the commission in that in 2021, in the fall, I sat in a council meeting where a presentation was made to them by Ready, the Regional Economic Development of Eastern Idaho, Teresa McKnight. And she brought up the fact that the type of housing that manufacturing companies, that employers are seeking oftentimes is single-family housing, modest, affordable single-family housing, and that in order for Pocatello to attract businesses to come here or manufacturers, oftentimes that's what they're looking for. And she brought up the fact that she had at least five companies interested in moving to Pocatello, and that one by one, they went elsewhere. And there were multiple reasons, but some of them centered around property taxes, the lack of affordable single-family housing, and the fact that their employees were going to have to pay more in property tax to move to Pocatello than where they were at. And one of those companies was in Northern California. Now, that to me is concerning, because again, I think for this land use map I'm seeing, and it's just a perception on my part, so I could be wrong, but my perception is that there continues to be an effort, perhaps by developers, to continue to increase the density that we're seeing. And the development seems to be geared towards density, like townhomes, apartments, condos, that type of a thing. I want the commission to understand that that really isn't the kind of housing that is being sought if we want to attract businesses who can help us with the comprehensive plan. So again, it's a concern. I'm not for or against. I'm just bringing up a fact. Thank you.
Anyone else uncommitted? Opposed? Anyone opposed? Go ahead and sign in first, please.
I'm Robin Kent. I live at 1413 City Creek. We're in part of the area that's been proposed to change from residential to residential open space, and we just have a lot of concern about that. Our property goes all the way down to the City Creek Trail system. We've been good user, you know, stewards of the land. We've kept it unfenced. We allow the right of way through our property. And I've got a lot of concern about our property being changed to the designation of open space. If you look at the graph that he put up there with the zoning commission, open space falls right under public land, and I have a lot of concern, and I know he said that that's not the case, but that seems like leaving my backyard as open space, I have a lot of concern about what that is going to open it up to. We've already had problems with homeless people down there and had a lack of support from the city police department in addressing that. And I have a lot of concern with opening my property up as open space, that that's going to continue to be a problem. I can't think of anybody who would want their own backyard designated as open space in the city, and I can't find a good reason for that other than we're all concerned that the city's going to try and take part of our property for the trail system. And I even spoke with the county commissioner, who shared that concern when we spoke with him about that. And so I would hope that you guys would consider changing that back and leaving the residential property as residential property without the designation of open space to protect our property owner rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else opposed? Did you get all signed in? Okay, thank you.
I'm Anna Lucy Keller.
I'm Anna Lucy Keller, and I live at 1445 City Creek in Pocatello, and I have lived there since 1962. Our house is the oldest house up there, and all of the others came behind, and we experienced through the years having people buy the three acre lot and start dividing it in half, and then the next person wants to divide it in half, and it was beginning to change the character. And after a couple of lawsuits and a lot of contention, we were able to declare the original area on the creek side and the upper portion across from the creek side as one unit, and which allowed them to build, another developer to build on the brow along Lincoln and a little farther up onto City Creek. But the original plot in what was Crest Hills Estates from the 1950s is the portion which the right of way goes over our land for the trails. I was on the committee that, on the mayor's committee, that worked on the trail system and trying to get the City Creek management area. You're all familiar with that particular area. And for two years, I went to monthly meetings to raise my hand and say, and horses. That was my main thing to do. But we were able to maintain the current properties within, I guess, about the last 10 or 15, about 15 years, and we have maintained that all along the creek, pretty much by ourselves, chasing out the various campgrounds and misuses of the city, fire rings, that sort of thing. Having hiked that area with friends for years and years, I can't tell you how many camps I've pulled down and how many fire rings I've kicked apart down there, but we've managed to keep that from being a problem. And we are concerned about the designation of open spaces. We're perfectly happy being called residential. And if you declare open space, the, the gentleman read, "The designated open space. Federal, state, city, privately owned, parks, cemeteries, golf courses, trails, river areas, nature conserves, areas, and agricultural land. Everything except the blue sky above, you can declare open space."
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anybody else opposed?
Do I have a minute to sign this?
Yep.
Thank you.
I live at 1517 City Creek. I also own property that, that I and I think the last two people that spoke, we've all had this land that we share with the community, and we've done so successfully. It's published, it's posted at the trail heads that that's private property. It's a partnership between us who own the land and the city as private land that we allow to stay open for public use. I share the concerns that were voiced with a formal designation and change in that land use designation of residential open space, where the open space is not, does not have any sort of real solid definition and zoning requirements, that with that in time is going to come additional burdens or restrictions or on, on that land. Forceful dictation of how that land is, is taken care of or shared or, or open. So as it stands, I am, I am opposed to it. I am not at all opposed, and I don't think anyone that's spoken from our neighborhood is opposed to us, us sharing the land. We value the trail system as much as I think anybody who uses that. I think the City Creek Management Plan, I'm assuming that's who it was, they've done a very good job of, of maintaining the trail, making it user-friendly, keeping, for the most part, trash, significant damage down, that sort of thing. But it, it is a partnership between us, not us being forced and told, this is what you're going to do with this. I think that's the right way to approach it, and I'm happy to continue doing that. But as it's written now with a lack of clarity on that open space portion, I oppose it. That is all.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Okay, Jim?
Just regarding the designations, while, while these are tied to zoning, whether you rezone and go to, have the ability to go to that type of zone because of your designation, designations have no teeth whatsoever. You know, we could, we could designate the whole city open space, and it wouldn't really mean a thing if private property owners didn't have a say in that. And that would come at the request of a property owner to rezone their property. Now, if it's publicly owned, then we would, we would change that as we, as we see a need. But there's never not, there is never a time that we wouldn't work with the property owners first before we ever wanted to initiate a change in zoning. Any questions for me?
I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on how this is, is working. So right now, something is zoned residential, and then we adopt the future land use, and even though the future land use says it's open space, it's still residential.
Correct.
There is nothing in our current city code that says open space?
No.
So in, in the packet that we have that they don't have, you have some frequently asked questions. Do you have that there? Could you read the very last one?
I don't have it on, on.
Here.
And I don't think those, those, I think he's reviewed those and he's addressed those, so I don't know that that's appropriate. Maybe if you have a question specifically about it.
I think it is directly applicable to what's been talked about here this evening. That's why.
Could you ask a question regarding it?
Do you agree with this statement? Can I read the statement then?
Sure.
Says, "What if I don't agree with the proposed designation?" Says, "Please feel free to contact the Pocatello Planning and Development Services Department to discuss your opposition to the proposed designation for your property. The city is more than willing to sit down and work with you to determine the most appropriate designation within the context of your property's location, surrounding designations, and land uses. My question is, how would they initiate that process? Do they contact you? Do they, is it, is it not of a concern until it comes up in a zoning question? Or can they contact now and put something in the record? How would, how would they do that?
Yeah, and that was included in the letter that we, we sent to property owners, and several property owners did contact us, and we did sit down and, and talk about what their designation was, and if, and if that made sense within the context of their area.
So I have a further question. How then does the future land use designation, say of open space, how does that impact decisions in the future regarding zoning changes?
That allows, in some instances, it allows opportunity for different types of development. In some opportu, in some instances, like open space, it protects that area from development. And so say, a current property owner sells their property, and in the future, somebody comes in and, and really wants to protect that, that area. This is not going to be developed, period. They can rezone it to open space, and the zoning will provide standards to say, this is what's allowed in this area. That, that comes with a private property owner's decision to do that, to rezone it. A lot of times, for example, in the downtown area, if the property is zoned residential and it's designated urban core, and they can seek to rezone it from residential to whatever zone, central commercial, and allow a mix of commercial and residential uses.
So if a property owner came and said, I know this area is residential, one of these property owners, we would like it to move to this open space, that would be allowed? But if they came and said, I would like this to become industrial?
Then that wouldn't be.
It doesn't align with the future land use designation and would not be allowed to change to that?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the purpose of the comprehensive plan, future land use map, right?
In, in opportunities to, to rezone or, or, or to protect. That's what the designation is meant for.
Okay. Thank you. It's the only questions I have.
You may not be able to answer this, but I'm very familiar with Bannock County's open space and what it is for. Have you looked at that enough to say that this is what it's going to be similar to? That it, it just says pretty much this land cannot be developed?
I don't know what their standards are regarding open.
Would you say that it can't be developed would be accurate?
The designation wouldn't say that. If there was a zoning of open space, then there, there would be, there could be provisions for that.
Okay.
As part, this is a new designation as well. We'll keep that in mind. And so the only zone that really corresponds is the public lands, and now that doesn't address a private property. And so moving forward in the future to have a zoning to kind of correspond with private property, we'd have to be looking at new zoning to make that work. Right now, we don't have that, and as a private property owner being designated as open space, I wouldn't want to rezone it to public lands if it were me. I would work with the city to work on standards for a new zone.
So if, sorry, Chair. So if I had a property that I loved, and I didn't want it developed in the future, but it's zoned residential, which would allow for future development, a way of protecting that would be for me to say, I would like this to be open space. I couldn't ask that it be made public property, because that's, that's what the previous proposal had, but I could ask that it be designated open space, which would then protect the property from being subdivided even after I'm long gone.
The designation wouldn't.
The designation.
It would have to be zoned.
If I asked for it to be zoned, that, which I could if it aligned with the land. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. If I understood the property owners correctly, one of their main concerns was this idea of shared governance of the land, and I was curious if you could speak a little bit more to that and how this new designation might affect that in the future.
From what I understand, it's all private property, and, and they, they have the ability to control their, their land as, as they please. And the shared, because of the trail system through City Creek, there, I don't know if there's any written agreements or anything, but a common understanding, at least from my understanding, there's a common understanding that there is a trail there and that people can use it, and they, as a private property owner, allow that to happen on their property. The designation won't change that, nor will it change any ability as a private property owner to use their land as they, as they wish.
Thank you.
That won't address any type of easements. If there is an easement on the property, then there are different rules.
Right.
Commission, any other questions? Sure? Could think about for a second? Any?
Sorry, Chair. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
I believe that you just cleared my question up, but I want to verify. So we have these designations to help plan future development, but as it stands now, there's, you know, no one's going to, there's, people's zonings aren't going to change because of a designation.
Correct.
And any zoning change, which would be the only way to change what kind of development can go on in a property, would still have to go through both the planning and development hearing as well as a city council hearing.
Correct.
So getting your piece of ground designated as open space does not change what can be done there, what can't be done there, the rights that you have as a property owner. Do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Yep. All right. Thank you.
This might seem like a really silly question, but I just want to make sure. Right now, we're calling this future land use designation. If we go through and recommend to approve this to city council, does it make it? It doesn't make it the new comprehensive plan map? It is still the future?
That's part of the comprehensive plan, which is the future.
So it will, so, so after this is gone through city council, that means if we get a zone change, we're going to be asked if it goes along with what the code says about zoning as well as this new map?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, whether it aligns with the comprehensive plan, and this is the map that we'll be talking about.
Any other questions? There's no other questions? I would like to entertain a motion. Oh, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
I'm, I'm moved to recommend approval of the Pocatello comprehensive plan 2040 future land use map, and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
I second.
We have a motion by Hula and a second by Fenwick. Ace, will you call a vote?
Yes.
Fenwick? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Frye?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
And with that, we are closed. 7:57. Sweet.